Evening Holliston and welcome to the Monday, August 30th, 2021 meeting of the Select Board. You'll notice that at the head of the table, we have Chief Cassidy with us this evening. He is Acting Town Administrator for the week as Travis Ahern is away this week. So we welcome you to the table, happy to have you and thank you for stepping into the role to serve as an interim, Acting Town Administrator this week. So he plays multiple roles, wears many hats tonight because not only is he Acting Town Administrator with Agenda Item Number Five under his belt, he'll also handle One and Two, both the COVID-19 Community Update and the CARES Act and the ARPA Programmatic Update. So I guess I hand the mic over to Chief Cassidy.
Thank you. So it's nice to be seeing some profile as opposed to just seeing the shining spot on the back of my terms of our COVID update, want to share where we are. It's been a while since I've provided an update. Since your last meeting on Thursday, we've had five additional new cases. The good news is we've had 12 people recover since our meeting was today. We have no new COVID-related fatalities. We currently have 15 active cases. So for a population of roughly 15,000, that is one tenth of 1% of our population is considered to be currently an active case. Those are spread out over 14 addresses because we have one cluster at a single family home. We have a dozen individual cases at single-family homes and one single case having more than family. In terms of our weekly summary, you see that we continue to have a very small portion that are active cases in comparison to our overall case count, but I did want to show a different way of looking at the data. And this looks at active cases is the green line at any given time since the pandemic began, whereas the new cases are noted in the orange. Compare what that looks like to the state graph, we have a very similar path that has been charted for Holliston. See the peaks in the same times. And as you can see, both the state cases as well as our cases are continuing to dip off in this current uptick. So you like that trend? This is a familiar graph to you before. This was something that we've seen previously where we are looking not only at our positivity compared to that of the state positivity, we are also seeing testing numbers and then we are seeing risk designation as determined by the state. So obviously the last couple of weeks we've been in the yellow. Before that, we were in the green for one week and we have been in the gray for a few months. We continue to be very high in our vaccination. We continue to encourage anyone who has not yet received a vaccination, if they're able to do so, we encourage them to do that. They're readily available at a lot of pharmacies as well as there are still vaccination clinics being conducted in the region. I know there's one coming up at Mass Bay and Ashland that will take place in the afternoon on a weekday to try and capture some of the school-aged children that aren't eligible. We do want to continue obviously to encourage folks to get the vaccine. I did want to talk briefly about last week's decision by the FDA where they did approve the first vaccine that's not under an EUA. And when the approval was given, it is functionally the same dosage as what they previously posted under the EUA. So right now they'll continue to use the same vials for the 12 to 15-year-olds. So that anyone over 16 could either be getting the previously labeled vials or once they get to market the Comirnaty, which the name for the approved drug vaccine comes from a blend of community and they put mRNA in the middle of that and they're trying to go for the herd immunity as well. So that's where this naming convention came up with. So there is hope that those that may have been vaccine positive in the past because they were under an EUA might now that there is approval of at least one and the other manufacturers have submitted their paperwork for approval as well. There might continue to be some folks who may have been reluctant to get it in the past because it was under EUA that they might go ahead and do now. Did want to talk briefly about mask mandates. Department of Elementary and Secondary Education has instituted a mask requirement for pre-K through 12 schools, which of course does impact the Holliston public schools. It's through October 1st. Any student staff or visitors to the buildings will be required in indoor settings to be wearing a mask mandate unless of course they meet certain exemptions. And then in parallel to that, last week MIAA, which oversees and regulates the inter-schoolastic activities of our schools, also issued a very similar timeframe requirement for indoor sports activities. And so that's the locations in town right now, which have a mask mandate through October 1st. And that could be lifted earlier depending on metrics or it could be extended later depending on metrics. But I do want to give a plug that the Holliston Board of Health tomorrow evening will be having a discussion starting at 7:15 regarding masking here in Holliston. Welcome public feedback. And if you're not able to attend the meeting via Zoom, you are welcome to submit written comments to Scott Moles, the Health Director, and that can be entered into the record prior to them having a discussion or as part of the discussion.
Thank you.
Any questions on the recently resurrected COVID Community Updates?
John?
No questions.
Ben?
Just one quick question. Do we know how many of the active cases we call our breakthrough cases?
We do not have access to that information. But I can tell you that statistically, close to 80% is what I've heard on public health conference calls.
Close to 80% of the cases. Okay, well, I was going to ask you to go back to that slide that looks at the vaccine rates, but perhaps that's not the most relevant point. In terms of positivity and vaccinated and certainly in terms of overall negative impact of the virus for sure, hospitalizations and serious complications for sure. But in terms of positivity rate, it may not be the most important.
Right, so this is part of the conversation that I've been having with the Board of Health is that the positivity rate and the active cases are both data points to be used in a discussion with regards to mitigation measures to be taken. But a year ago, when we were looking at you know, surge even back in January, that was just as the vaccine was starting to be available to those who were in congregate care settings or working in healthcare. So very large case count in excess of 100 was very different than right now a case count of 15. And even the super majority of those are breakthrough cases. Their symptoms are less, their experience is not as adverse. And sometimes people are asymptomatic, getting positive test results and not even knowing absent tests that they had it. So it's, you were comparing two different operating paradigms.
All right, no other questions? Do we have any questions from members here in the room or on the Zoom call for Chief Cassidy in terms of the COVID-19 Community Update? I'm not seeing any, so we're going to move on. Thank you to number two, which is the CARES Act and ARPA Programmatic Update. We have COVID update twice, so we're just going to lock that one off and talk about CARES and ARPA here. So we'll start with CARES Act and then ARPA.
Great, so earlier today I did send a quick snapshot that shows what has been posted to units so far for the municipal CARES spending and also some projections for what our balance could be through the end of October, which is a period in which we need to obligate all our CARES funds. I am aware of a few other pending requests that would be coming to the board. I do know that tomorrow evening on their agenda, the Board of Health is expected to discuss additional request for surveillance for the months of July through October. The board had previously approved through June for surveillance and at times have had some Region 4A funding available for surveillance, but right now they do not. So that would probably be approximately $10,000. I know that facilities is seeking a quote for modifications to the social distancing measures that were installed outside of the building departments, reconfiguration, reconfiguring, no opening. I don't have that quote back yet. And I've been in conversations with the Technology Director with regards to some additional remote meeting setup and possibly another Zoom license or other enhancements that would facilitate remote telework capacity. But other than that, we still need to identify some possible other eligible uses of CARES between now and October.
So I think there's, you know, some content there to talk about here with the board. So we obviously don't want to return the balance to the state. That is not a goal or priority, something that we want to see done. You projected a balance to December of this year of 121,000 after those mentions you just had.
That is prior to any of those votes, so that's through what the board approved last Thursday.
Okay. So with those, where we are today, we're still looking at a substantial balance. You are looking for some guidance input from this board in terms of where you would?
Yeah, based on the successes of what we've done in the past, is there anything that you would like to provide me with guidance as emergency management director to go back to other departments and encourage them to, they report to an independent board committee to propose something else that might be CARES eligible, the board can consider approving. I think, for example, rent mortgage relief, we've had a couple of very successful rounds of that. It's been a little while since we've offered that. A lot of people are back to work, but there's still some people in town that are facing housing insecurity. I know that the board has approved funding for the senior center with their meals free program through the end of October, but does the board want me to go back and push the council agent and urge them to do more from a food insecurity standpoint? Do we want to talk with our friends at the pantry shelf and see if there's some initiative where we can partner with them to address food insecurity in our community? Now, I don't want to give money away, but at the same time, if there's a need in our community that a group or organization is aware of and it's a CARES eligible expense, the purpose of these funds is to help our community. And so if someone knows of a need, we just find out who the best municipal or non-government champion is to address that. Let's do it.
You have not contacted those departments at this point in time to say that there looks to be a balance. We'd like to hear from you again.
I wanted to get a little direction from you before I do that.
So we're not looking at a situation where it's been crickets. The offer has not been made.
No, no, they don't really see some balance. They just have made requests either in their normal course of operations or as a need was made known to them. But I'm happy to climb if you think we're at that point.
Okay, we'll see what John and Ben have to say as well. And there was another similar pie chart that had it in percentage.
Yes.
Are you able to pull that up or no?
That had been developed by the town of Bestfair, so I don't have that.
Okay, because I distinctly remember that in the category of housing insecurity, it was 8%.
So again, if the board came up with a concept and wanted to specify a specific dollar amount that was your target, or sorry, not dollar amount, but percentage amount that was your target in a particular area, we could certainly try and pursue that.
Okay, I'm not sure, that wasn't actually my point, except to say that it was up until this conversation tonight, a relatively small percentage of the total funds that the town received. Well, I think we have a bit to talk about, so I'm interested to hear what John and Ben have to say before we give Chief Cassidy some key direction as Emergency Management Director.
So a couple of things. Yes, I'd like to see more on rent mortgage relief. Yes, I'd like to see more relief given to the restaurants in town that we gave relief to about a year ago. Yes, their town, their town levy fees, call, how much that was, 50% of strip and flats. Correct, do you know what the aggregate amount of that was?
Oh, it was, it was less than 10.
Less than 10. And then finally, with booster shots looming, it occurs to me that there was some issue regarding trying to get seniors to the locations where the vaccines were going to be dispersed. We talked about using Tommy's taxis and a couple of other solutions. If we're going to be looking to giving the same population a booster shot, could we, through our new Council on Agent Director, revisit a similar situation now with using funds from this to provide transportation to these elders to those locations?
That's right, you know, I know the board had initially approved a dollar amount to be able to cover that sort of an issue. And then that was covered by another funding source, so we didn't have enough money to use that. But we certainly, and again, there's a change of personnel, so we can let them know the history there. And right now, because there is such a higher inventory of vaccines available compared to the requests they're actually doing in the home administration. So previously you had to meet very, very strict criteria for them to go into your home. Right now, even if you don't meet a lot of those criteria, they'll still come to you and administer a simple shot just because. But again, it's good to get that on their radar because the guidance around boosters has not been released. There's some discussion whether it's eight months after initial administration, whether there's going to be a recommendation to move that up to five months after administration. And boosters are different than what is already authorized, which is a third shot in series for those that have received Pfizer or Moderna, where certain people lose eligibility criteria. And it's self-certified, you know, you don't get a doctor's note to get that third dose from the series right now.
I guess more broadly, my reaching back to the CLA Director to find out if there's any way these resources can help that population before the end of December. Last item, we gave you some homework last week. We're going to check on possibly moving the expanding online resources for library patrons item.
Yes.
From ARPA to CARES, that would be about 19,000 to change. So I'll throw those four out there and see what's there.
So with regards to ARPA 22009 proposal, I did review that. The closest links under CARES would have been accelerated telework capacity and school distance learning. So that's really not a good match under attachment A from the DLS for CARES. Whereas it was a very close match for equity-focused services, additional flexibility for heart-stiff communities and families to address health disparities, invest in housing, address educational disparities and promote healthy childhood environments. So I still feel that it's a better match for ARPA as opposed to trying to shoot horn it into a CARES organization. Some of my comments probably overlap with Mr. Brown. I do think rent and mortgage relief is something I should look at again. But personally, I would very much like to see if we can do anything about food insecurity. Whether it's with the CLA population, other community populations, just to make sure that they're hungry and need some support in that respect. I think that's very important. So those are the two main areas that I would advocate for. Whatever organizations would be appropriate to do so.
I have a couple of questions. We talked about this last Thursday and mentioned that the PPE request through the ARPA steering group is a placeholder for the future. And I'm assuming then that this is irrelevant, it's not an expense to track down now because we probably have enough PPE. So we wouldn't look right now with the remaining CARES act money to beef up our PPE.
Correct, and I also have a separate federal grant for around $10,000 for PPE. The period of performance has been extended to next August, so we still have yet another funding source available to acquire additional PPE if necessary.
Then coming back to John's point about transportation costs for seniors who want to receive booster shots, I wondered about food clinic. So holding one here in Holliston, I wonder, does CARES Act allow for that type of? Because certainly last year we were seeing that there was strong, strong opinion from the governor and others, of course, that you receive your flu shot, they mandated it for students to be in schools after December, very of the winter.
And then we sent that report.
Yeah, so I didn't know if running a flu clinic is something that CARES could apply to and/or transportation costs for seniors who want to get a flu vaccine.
I know the Board of Health has had early conversations with regards to whether or not they have the bandwidth to administer a local food clinic or whether the model that the schools did last year when they were trying to address the fact that they were trying to get school-aged children with a flu shot and they had a pharmacy come in and administer it and they just advertised it for lines of support staff. So we certainly can follow up with the Board of Health to see if there is an appetite for that.
Yeah, I think it's worth, I mean, if CARES can cover that, it falls with, when the CARES Act money needs to be addressed.
End of October.
Right, normally a flu clinic is early in the autumn. If you can explore that and there's an opportunity there, I think we should explore it.
I was planning on being up till even tomorrow.
Okay, I do like revisiting license relief businesses to restaurants around there. John, if I recall correctly, it was four businesses that had a liquor license and we offered 50% off the license fee for them. I imagine that the period of economic recovery for them is beyond the time period where restrictions were in place, which is all we were responding to at the time. So I am interested to know more about that. And for sure, rent and mortgage relief, I doubt very much that the community is without people who are in need or in a position of having housing insecurities and then anything related to food insecurity, senior meal program. And you mentioned something about the Holliston Food Pantry. And I don't quite understand how the money would funnel to them, but there are very creative minds that could make that happen if there was a way to do it, so.
Sure, similar to the way the CAF acted as the fiduciary agent for the mortgage program. I believe that we could set up a system by which if the Holliston Food Pantry, because they're in a nonprofit, had a program that was going to address food insecurity in our community, we would be able to burn over them.
Okay, so you have a list?
I think I can follow that through.
Do you feel you have clear direction from the board on which direction to go?
I do, I just saw Clark's hand. Or as a quote. Follow up if you're upset.
Yes.
So Mike, back to the library question.
Yes.
The CARES Act summary seems to indicate that there was a Phase Three package that was related to libraries, education and cultural heritage. And it included $50 billion for preparation, response to coronavirus, including grants to state charities and tries to expand digital network access, purchasing internet accessible devices and provide technical support services under the Institute of Museum and Library Services.
Right, so that was the funding source. So if they got it through that channel, then that would be appropriate expenditure, but the guidance for us through DLS didn't include that kind of program. I know that seems confusing.
So in other words, our library would have had to make separate applications, they have access to that?
Yes, so there were some state programs that made certain funding available to libraries, so yes.
Do we know Holliston Library tapped into those resources?
I do not know. I can check plus.
Seemingly this money went to the state.
Yes, and it would need to funnel through that to the locals.
I get it, so it's under that, hate this word, it's under that tranche.
Yes.
Ours was strictly CARES as the way you describe it, excluding these national endowment of community entities for the arts, federal libraries and so.
In the same, in the same way we've seen some other.
It was all under CARES, but it went to different paths.
The same way I would describe it is ESSER that went to the schools.
Yeah.
Was under CARES, but it was a separate.
Okay, so I guess this is a kind of a different question now to find out if Holliston Libraries ever had a chance to look at those resources for other things, obviously it doesn't solve all that here, but open up a question.
True, thank you, absolutely.
Do you, I don't think there's a motion here. You have enough direction from the board to contact the other departments to say, hey, look, if you have something that you had put forward and will put forward again under CARES or had something waiting in the wings to go ahead and do that.
I have consensus. We've got an electronic message in the board. Those, our friends at DLS were very negative about those.
Believe I have an opinion from somebody says, well, it's bad.
Yes.
I do, I think I do.
I know you do.
I hear you, Mike, thanks.
Absolutely. So briefly, I wanted to pivot from closing out CARES, which we need to do by the end of October, to ARPA, which we have a very long way for. And just, this is a high-level summary, I know in the packet we've got all the requests that have come into date, also notations and what has already been authorized by the board. But you see the funding that we have received and again, as we mentioned in terms, and because this is a federal program, we have all sorts of acronyms. We have the non-entitlement unit, which means that we are not a metropolitan community. And then we have the abandoned county funding, and those are the two portions that have come into us so far. So we've received about $2.2 million of our ARPA funding. Board to date has obligated 1.76 million dollars of that. About three quarters of a million dollars for the current fiscal year and then the balance in subsequent split years, which means that we have just shy of 60% that is unoperated. So the question is, as the ARPA steering group continues to receive applications on a rolling basis, as it reviews that which has already come in as well as the list of shovel-ready projects from our engineer and also as we know that there are some damage issues that are in the wings, is there a philosophy of operations that this board wants the ARPA steering group to consider? Do you want to set aside 50% of our budget for capital and for infrastructure? Do you want to guarantee a third of it gets used for educational purposes? Do you, do you have an overarching expectation of how it is that we're going to use this funding as a community over the next couple of fiscal years? Or are we going to deal with it on an application-by-application basis? So that's the, let's open up the conversation, just as I looked for direction a few minutes ago on how to close out CARES. What's your expectation of how you are going to administer $4.3 million of ARPA funding?
So I'm going to piggyback on your introduction there and just make reference to a call I had with Representative Dyckman this afternoon. And the overall message I received from the representative is that they are, our state reps are actively seeking infrastructure projects, capital projects from communities for consideration with the state's ARPA funding as well as potential infrastructure funding from the federal government. I think the matching message is that this is uncharted territory and there are a lot more unanswered questions than there are known questions. But given the conversation that I had with Representative Dyckman and her strong encouragement to submit to her office, and I assume also Senator Spilka's office, a list, a wish. Encouragement to submit to her office, and I assume also Senator Spilka's office, a list, a wish list of all types of capital and infrastructure projects. My reaction after that call and hearing what you're saying now, if we're talking philosophically at this point in time, would be to. Get that list in to the state, to our state reps. And wait on a response, because there's so much unknown, again, in terms of the five billion that the state has for ARPA funds and. The what is anticipated to be the large infrastructure. Vote or or funding coming your way, so. That's interesting to me, when you talk about sixty percent unobligated, well, I want to hear what John and Ben have to say, but I wanted to share that conversation with Representative Dyckman. She also sent me a sort of a summary email that has all sorts of different. ARPA type expenses that she's hearing from other communities, I will read through the list, but. The message I got was to be creative and to be broad, as we consider what to submit to our state reps for. ARPA funding from the state and infrastructure funding from the federal government. So to me it seems, well, again, I don't want to jump the gun, let's hear what everybody has to say. Sixty percent unobligated is a good number to start with. Forty percent obligated right now with the decision on full day kindergarten, so we're sixty percent unobligated, what does that come up to be for dollar amounts, you know?
Two million, six hundred and three thousand one hundred and twelve dollars.
Two million, six hundred and three. Yes, sir, please.
Yes, sir, please.
Yeah, so when it comes to those federal programs, there's a certain, I I feel they're in it. They maybe paused in a different timeframe than ARPA is, in other words, maybe on the backend of ARPA. But by the time they come, I can envision doing the same thing with ARPA that we're doing with cares. Where if we get this pot of money from the state to do all of Route sixteen over with sidewalks. And that costs, say, five million bucks, or actually say it costs three million, and we had put it on ARPA, well, we'd move it from ARPA onto this. Infrastructure, we we move it around, provided it was enabled and I'm sure it will be, so that's one thought. I wouldn't inhibit your idea that just because we have ARPA, we shouldn't also think of big projects for the infrastructure. I'm concerned that we've blown through forty percent of ARPA by the month, I think it's too fast. And I'll share with the committee when we meet next that pulsing these requests from rolling applications, more of a prioritized application might be a pivot we should think about. There are items on here, for example, that I believe are timely, the cleaning and sanitation that the chief put forward. That has to be detoxed that you do over the next three to five years. But yet there are other items that are, they're nice, but do we really need to spend money now? Or can we wait months from now or perhaps a year from now, this money has to last us three years. So I think it's important on this board to pulse that expectation. With four point three available over three years, is it wise to go through more than a third of that in a year, just as a broad benchmark? I think that's where the chief is going, should we consider maybe prioritizing some of these items? Should we consider pulsing them, as I said, in a way that says in year one, we're going to address sort of the echo of cares. Put in place the items that we know have sustainable and impactful. Value over the next three years, and at the back end do more cleanup cases. There's a lot of different ways to look at it, but I'm personally concerned that forty percent is done already. Gone through a lot, and there's more looming, if you look at some of the requests that are downstream, including the home repair program, that's a great program. Do we need that right away? Repairing COVID, English SCL and learning gaps for HPA students, it's a great item, it's about a hundred thousand dollars. So those will add up quickly for a program that just started. So it's just something that concerns me, and I think personally I'm going to advocate a more of a pump the brakes approach. It's not a no, but maybe our group, for example, doesn't meet every week, maybe we'd meet every month. And we assess the ones that are coming down the pike that seem to have the highest priority at this time. What do you think of that?
So, when I think about recovery, right, so requests that are tied to recovery, whether it be educational, economic. The ability for people to stay in their homes, like the senior program for home repairs, I think, why would you delay on that? So I I see, I see absolutely what you're saying about not moving quickly.
You're just prioritized.
Well, I would, I would categorize those as recovery.
I would agree.
So I would need a justification, as we talk about this very high level, John, right, we're not talking about any one particular request.
No, I did, that's a second point.
Yeah, I would say that I would need a justification for why you would delay on any initiative, any request that that starts a recovery process. That's just sort of my initial thought, but I could not agree with you more that pumping the brakes is is a very good idea right now. I don't feel a great rush to make a decision because, I'm just trying to pick out a good example here. That hasn't yet been approved. Let's turn to Ben, see what Ben has in mind.
Pressure.
No.
No, I just. No, I mean, I, I'm inclined to agree that, you know, this money has to last us, and we do. You know, maybe we do prioritize recovery, and then when we get to later on, we can go more towards some of those other projects. I I'm happy to see as well, there's some placeholders for those PPE for sanitation, cleaning and sanitizing. And for potential, you know, female, there's any issues there, I think it's important that we think ahead a little bit and understand that, you know. This is probably the last money we're going to get for dealing with COVID, so we want to make sure that, you know, something else comes up in a year or two, we're not. We have a blow through all the money to to get us there. You know, certainly there are some things here, potentially recovery thing items, yeah, I could certainly see that. One of my concerns, I brought it up before, ARPA might not be the most appropriate way for, you know, we talked about dance. I just, the only reason I'm not saying it should be ARPA, I don't know, it's certainly probably more appropriate in an infrastructure bill. I just, my only concern about those just in general is if we're going to find a source for. Making sure because they could be potentially expensive and. We have alternative, that's just something that I personally am in favor of, but not at the expense of some of these other recovery initiatives.
And if I could, with regards to both your comment as well as one that John had made earlier. This really is a game of three D or four D chess, so it might be that by deciding as a community that we wanted to do that section of Route sixteen, including sidewalks. That that freed up local funds that had originally been earmarked per se for that project, that now become available for the dance. That were previously public, so it's, it is sometimes moving.
Yes.
Things around holistically for the betterment of the community.
Well, that's really where the importance of the five year capital plan, thinking about some of these things and thinking about the infrastructure holistically, I think is so important. To be able to sort of look at those bigger picture items in that way, so we can see, you know, maybe it is more appropriate to move something towards CARES. The challenge, I think we're going to see though, is that every community is doing the exact same thing, which is going to drive up some costs, some things that we might have been able to get. You know, at reasonable rates before, now suddenly we might have to pay a premium to, because the vendor is very busy.
Town Hall is a great, it's a great example of something like that, so that's certainly, so, I mean, I guess like overall, I don't like.
I I I like what John had to say with, you know, like prioritizing, let's get through things that are of a higher priority now, let's think about this thing as a long term.
Yeah, I'll bring up the idea of needing less frequently, so that as the ARPA requests come in through the chief. Steering group is looking at maybe a larger batch of items that it can organically prioritize, because that's what they're there for. They're there to make sure that the essence of what the ARPA grants is there to cure gets the right attention, but if we suddenly feel that through this board. The direction is to really start pushing through those items that have the most imminent and and urgent need, they get through. It's not no on the other ones, it's not, maybe not, right, it might just be, yeah, it might just be like, maybe next year. And that's the way the decision making flow chart was designed, was that there were several off ramps, there was the seed ultimate funding and get back to us. There was also what we refer to as parking it for a while, so we certainly have the flexibility right now with a request that's come in. To let them know we're pumping the brakes, we're not saying no, but we're not fast tracking it.
You know, three months ago when ARPA emerged, I was thinking, you know, would it be great to get one or two public works projects into this? Because that gives the kind of relief you talked about, now I'm thinking differently, things have changed the past amount of three months with the infrastructure bill. I inherently don't want to see an infrastructure item on ARPA, because we have access potentially to what Tina just talked about.
Sure, that was one of the questions I was going to ask you, John, what's missing, is there anything missing, what's missing in your mind on this existing list of. Like nineteen remaining items, it looks like, or requests, I should say, is anything missing? So in terms of your comment and Ben, your comment to to pump the brakes, slow down, to need less frequently, are you?
I don't mean to be dramatic, but I have a really sober answer to that question, what's missing is the unknown. We don't know what the pandemic is going to look like a year from now, we all optimistically think it's starting to vaporize, but who knows? We have three more years of land. Thank you, or something, we just don't know, to not have the resources to handle that.
So that was one point two million dollars of spending, right, so we have eighteen months worth of of very active pandemic response. Health emergency, public health emergency crisis, state of emergency local and so on, we have eighteen months of. Of history there on what it costs the town of Paulston to manage as as well as we did, and it was one. Hundred twenty thousand of cares left unspent, it was around one point two million dollars. I I I mean, I wouldn't lie, pragmatic, if I had a crystal ball, I'd say, look, if things really didn't improve in terms of the pandemic, it would be a. One point two million dollars of potential expenses to get us through for eighteen months, really. But that's not the point of what we're talking about, I understand.
And we certainly can look from reports and figure out specific sector. Usage, like we can figure out how much did it cost for us to support the regional vaccination program? So that if we needed to ramp up that kind of a regional response again, how much would we need to set aside for that? So we we've got a lot of data, but I I agree. It's it's important not to blow through this all in the first three months, I've I've seen some, and and last week, John had asked about the reporting requirement. For August thirty first, and I double checked that, that's for states, territories, metropolitan cities and counties. With a population that exceeds two hundred and fifty thousand residents, so as an NEU, we're not responsible for that, and and they have to come up with their recovery plan performance report. Covering the period of July thirty first, August thirty first, by the end of August, and then every twelve months afterwards, but we're, as an NEU, we're not on that report, so.
Just to give a small benchmark during my day job, that ACF number for me is one hundred and thirty seven million dollars, and we're already. Letting our clients in that space know they're going to be a lot above ten percent right out of the gate. For this purpose, because we recognize it's going to last three months.
I I've seen some best practices in terms of information sharing from legal cities and that sort of thing. I I'm dismayed at the volume that some communities have already allocated and committed, because to the correct point. We don't know what's coming down through this winter, x, y. Yeah, I I completely understand and and support what you're saying in terms of what's prioritized recovery. But recovery, I mean, talk, talk to the folks who just got impacted by Hurricane Idaho. They have still been in recovery for sixteen years in Katrina, so recovery is not a. Always a a quick thing that's done in six to twelve months.
Yeah, I mean, I guess that would be my one, I I don't think anything that I would refer to as an immediate benefit in terms of recovery would amount to to significantly knowledge anyway. Based on what I'm looking at here on this list of requests, but I think that would be my one comment, is that if. If there's this, if there's a sense from the proponent of the request, the person coming forward and making requests, that that this this request is tied to recovery that starts. When this money starts flowing and this initiative or or project gets underway, that that'd be elevated a little bit higher, but I think you guys would do that anyway. It's how you've done it to date, that's why the full day kindergarten was advanced, because that had an immediate imminent start date, so. Look, I'm totally on board with pumping the brakes, so what I'm hearing, John, and I don't hear any disagreement with you, is that you meet less frequently as a steering group?
It's not this week, right, it's a week, Wednesday, so I'll I'll bring the topic up to the committee. I'm sure Chief, if you're on the call anyways, but you'll fill traps, and what we'll try to do is let the other members know. We need less frequently, but when we need, we'll have more to talk about, and it may lend itself to that. The federal janitorial process of of prioritization.
The only other comment that I would make, and we could talk about it now or when we get to the fall town meeting discussion, is there are one, maybe two items on, there are two items on here that. Potentially come up on the fall warrant.
And I know Travis will want the. Direction. Prior to the warrant closing, as to whether or not those are. Being referred funding, other funding sources, whether those would be parts or whether those are going against to your award.
So I'm going to ask either you or John, the Trails Committee's request for PIPs tunnel drainage improvements. There are two, did that get, it wasn't, you asked for more information, you asked them to go to CVC, so it could potentially show up on the town meeting warrant.
Not for fall, because CPCs are the ones that make their recommendations. So he recognizes that he's probably missed his opportunity to get on the fall. Through CVC.
The other one is the traffic monitoring equipment.
And also, I think, wasn't. So potentially.
Waste water treatment plant study. So I think that's the potentially a point of conversation discussion today is whether or not we want that, those requests to. Be considered at the September eight evening, or whether, John, the pumping of the brakes means hold on those for consideration. Or bring them through capital classes for the time being. Having that conversation, I have my own thoughts, but.
Is the warrant closing? Of course, I mean, you can open, but you know.
We have to. But we can make a decision on that, the eighth, the steering committee. Travis, George.
Yeah, I'm fine, I'm fine with waiting, I'd like to hear what the steering group thinks.
There's no desire here tonight to consider removing any of these requests off of the ARPA steering group's worklist?
Have the correction, lady.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you, so we're going to move on to warrants, so John, you can give the warrant there.
Making motion to approve a warrant, one hundred fifty three thousand nine hundred eighty three dollars in.
What should it be?
I will second that motion.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye, that carries, okay, anything else under? All right, so, yes, can.
Question, it went back to ARPA.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, absolutely.
We go back to that?
Yes, yes. Let up to the.
To the kids' table.
Yeah.
So, J Robinson, two thirty three Chamberlain Street, so before I forget. When you were talking about infrastructure, infrastructure is covered under ARPA, right?
Yes.
Yes, okay, so going back a couple of years, I know this resonates with John. On the Edor Bridge project, when Gill Engineering was out there, I'm going to say anecdotally, so I don't visit the town anything. He noticed one of the bridges near the. Well, I say, yeah, the bridge, which is really the the dam, whatever that runs under the road to the Edor Bridge. He took a look under there and again, anecdotally, it said, Roddy, it was interesting, yeah, so I'm not a qualified engineer, so I'm just reporting again, anecdotally, that. What he, Dan Crowbo had mentioned is that, that like for larger spans, there was funding to do studies. To assess whether, you know, any remediation needed to be done, but. For like smaller bridges, which that span from the Edor Bridge was, like, there was no flooding. So that could be a potential uses, some of these kind of like orphaned. Spans that are around town that may, you you would at least be using the money to be. uh, spans that are around town that may, you 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 would at least be using the money to be aware. You may look at it and then say, all right, um, we're gonna take a rest base to process fifteen years before we worry about it, but um, and then that would potentially dovetail off of the longer term infrastructure ask.
So that particular bridge on Woodland Street is also tied to the question of dams. Because I I think it's an open question as to how much of the bridge is integral to the dam itself. I could be way off on that, but that's my recollections and conversations I'm way off from that.
The underlying in is um, steel structured, and I don't know how long ago it was done, maybe eighties, maybe. Um, it is completely rotted, so it's really, if it's inter- it must be integral to the dam itself.
Yeah.
But what's holding the road up has nothing to do with the dam, has to do with the rotted. And it is, because they paved it last year and then almost immediately, probably around the time your engineers saw a sinkhole developed, right, where that rotted area was. So DPW is aware of it, and I couldn't pretend to know if Sean has it on on a ticker list that shows when those things should be dealt with, but Jay's right, it's be a nice tidy project for ARPA or infrastructure.
Yeah.
Yep. And that's one where, um, again, when does it need to be done? Not sure, but it'd probably be a good use of money. And I don't have an inventory of all those types of bridges that are around town, but. Uh, Dan, we can rough the traffic around that abandoned roadway that's right in.
Yeah.
Seen that? I heard an anecdote there.
There or whatever it was back then. I'm sure they just, as long as a fire truck doesn't need to go over it, right? Traffic exclusion down that.
There, I think I heard a story about uh, equipment going in that area and uh, yeah, perhaps. So so anyways, just call, just that's that's a call out there. And then the other question was more, so I'm asking as a citizen, even though I'm on the finance committee, uh, anyone that watches the fund, finance committee meetings would know that um, we discussed uh, full day kindergarten and we're waiting to have the opportunity to talk to the school committee um, because of questions around how do you keep that, you know, from a funding perspective sustained? So when you look at the monies that you're gonna spend through ARPA, are you looking at them as discrete? Because um, as a part- as a participant and someone, anyone that was a spectator to the finance committee meeting, you would probably hear that questioning around how after a certain period of time that full day kindergarten is sustained. For now, it's it's covered under ARPA. So is there a discreet methodology? Or a like potential, like, okay, we're gonna start with ARPA and then here are some ideas to continue the recurring?
I think we all have an answer. It's probably similar, but slightly varied. John can stand up first.
I said on those committees, Jay, um, the the impact of any annualized cost from ARPA on town finances when ARPA expires is a prominent question on every item that comes before the steering committee.
Okay.
The chairman of the finance committee is on that steering committee. He made it a point on two different occasions to, in my words, pressure the schools into recognizing that the decision would have that kind of an impact. I asked the chairman to uh, consider the fact that we are not there to make decisions yea or nay on whether or not impactful annualized cost should be a reason to say no. The reason we said yes to that, Jay, is because ARPA gives and delivers during the grant period resources to recover lost educational value for children of that age. So we met the test of the grant. It's an easy, easy item. But to answer your question, the annualized impact is something that everybody has their eyes open on. But because that item is so big, the the schools made a statement that they're very mindful of the impact it's going to be. They're gonna work towards a solution. That solution may or may not be within their financial reach, but when it comes, it will be a financial reckoning of the community, a community needs to make. But again, going back to the discussion, just my opinion, the way the chair of the finance committee couched the question, I thought was unfair, because it's almost as though he was trying to say, fear not, don't make this decision, because it'll have a large impact three or four years. Now, when the grant ends, don't do it. That was not the purpose behind the discussion. So two different things, we're very aware of annualized cost. But in this case, the idea of not using the federal grants to achieve an educational goal was really not in play.
So it was used to, so the money in that case was earmarked for something discreet? Like, the intention was to cover the the gap in learning from COVID?
Correct.
Did you get the impression that there was a ending? Like, cause to me, discreet means it has a start and an end date versus recurring?
Um, I believe, or you can correct me if I'm wrong, Chief, but I believe the superintendent indicated she had pre um, pre-action measurables, like how many children and what their educational decline was.
Yeah.
And then she'll have to monitor per ARPA, the progress of the grant um, funding against those children during full day kindergarten over the next three to five years. So she's gonna have to prove that the investment paid the dividends that was invested in vision.
And.
Is that correct?
Yes, and and because the ARPA funding needs to be obligated by December thirty first of two thousand twenty four, the ARPA portion of covering tuition free full day kindergarten was phased. And so it was a percentage the first year, it was a lesser percentage the second year. It was a lower percentage the third year, at which point ARPA drops off.
Yeah.
And the school did have a plan for years four and five, which were outside the scope of the steering group to be able to make a recommendation for the board to authorize funding. So the schools had a plan, but did recognize that after year five, it did really need to be fully absorbed into their operating budget. And it would need to be a community discussion based on the percentage of the overall district and therefore also town budget.
Okay, so you voted for it as a discrete item, saying that you assumed there would be a start and an end to.
It's starting with target funding.
Yes.
And everybody's asked, well, why vote for Jeff?
Okay, we understood.
Yeah, so I'm just using this like as an example of when you look at how you're spending money. Are you signing up for something that's a recurring spend? Or are you using the money saying that it's the screen, a start and an end date, like all the, okay?
Jay, I do have a question about um, the school committee coming to talk about full day kindergarten with the finance committee. So I was asked this question by a resident, how can you justify the use of ARPA funds when in five years it phases out, unless in five years it phases out, and you're still left with a questionable or what have you, basically, what have you committed the town to?
Yeah.
And my answer was, we've committed the town to what we should be doing every year, which is three to five year planning between the finance committee, the school committee, and the select.
Okay.
Right? Like the the type of tri board meeting, the type of planning that should be going on, best practices and the like at the start of the budget process every year. So I would welcome the conversation that the finance committee is looking to have with the school committee in terms of but full day kindergarten into the future, five years from now. I would welcome that at a tri- tri board meeting. I think that that's an important conversation to have among the three boards and committees, so that we can have that long range planning.
I'll update the committee tomorrow. They're probably watching the citizen speak and.
Yeah, yeah. I don't think, I mean, the idea of a tri board is is not not new at all.
Right, right.
Um, I see that as the place to have the conversation for what happens five years out. So ARPA started the conversation.
Yeah.
ARPA won't be the answer in five years.
Yeah.
So we're looking for the answer in five years, and that seems to me to be the type of agenda item for a tri board meeting.
Okay, I think you answered my question. Didn't mean to take us to a rattle of the school committee, but just look, two different, two different examples where the bridge, it's a study that has a, the study has a start and an end date, and you know that that's it. Um, or it's at least be be deliverable as insight, uh, whereas the other option was one where, like you had said, that other people are looking at it as a little less um, of a start and finish type spend situation. And the answer that I heard from John is that you look at both.
There's another item that's right in front of us right now, which is promote um, meeting tendencies. It's all funded, who cares, and then ARPA doing. Um, I think everybody has their eyes open. It's not going away. It's the the way we hope public meetings are after ARPA's gone and after some time it's not.
Yeah.
Who's to pay for that?
Well, it wasn't even allowed. And I had asked the clerk that when I was running the Edor Bridge project, because I was traveling to work.
Funding it with the expectation that when the funding goes away, what happens to Justin? What what happens to those resources? Well, we expect the town's gonna have to recommend that, because we like this idea. We think it will keep going.
I think that ties into the question mark of the unknown, because is the state gonna unwind that and go back to, like, you, we don't know.
Right, very much. And and even cleaning and sanitizing. I mean, that's why we have the placeholder in the ARPA right now. But at some point, that's either going to need to be embedded into department operational budgets, or we're going to have to change expectations of employees on the public as to
Yeah.
the environment that they're going to be walking into.
Cool. All right. Thanks, Jay. I'm gonna go back to my corner. Back to the location.
Uh, all right, so we'll put that as a first public comment we can see tonight under the ARPA agenda item. And so, John, do you have any public comment for this?
No. Um, just uh, the same one I had last week, which is to remind everyone about Halston Farms Day on Sunday, September twelfth, from ten AM to four PM. It's taking place at a number of farms throughout our community. We are like a farm community, and there's lots of places that are engaging. And um, want uh, people to participate where they can, and they can find out more information on this website.
Uh, I have three things. One, the first is that um, I'm happy to say that on Wednesday of next week, September first, we'll be interviewing two potential candidates for the assistant town administrator position. So thank you to the screening group that um, has advanced a couple of the applications forward. And we'll update uh, residents that we are moving forward to find a highly qualified, good fit for the town hall assistant town administrator position. That will be Wednesday, the first. Um, start school, for those of you who are parents, your moment to celebrate is coming on Wednesday. Um, first day of school for the Halston Public Schools. And that September twelfth, there's going to be a cornhole tournament at Blair Square during the farmers market itself. So first game starts at ten thirty. You are encouraged to bring your own cornhole and your own team. There are prizes for the top two teams. So sounds like, I haven't been in a while, because you've been on vacation for the weekends, but it sounds like the farmers market is going strong and will continue.
By mother nature.
This is a pretty rough couple of weekends there.
Yeah.
Um, and so this goes through the fall, the farmers market itself into October.
Yeah, maybe until late October.
Right. So there, you're sort of switching gears to some fall time activities, cornhole tournament?
We're hoping to get a little bit more traction. We're not getting as many uh, people signing up as we had hoped, so that's why I asked for the plug.
Okay, so people, if they do want to sign up, they're gonna register by emailing Aaron Anderson at Halston Mark Farmers Market at gmail dot com. I guess you can contact the town administrator if you miss that email, but um, it's probably on Facebook as well. So that was the second of two, though that was the third of three, so I am all set. So any public comment uh, here in the room or on the Zoom call? I am not seeing any, so we're gonna move on then to comments from the acting town administrator, Chief Cassidy.
It's only been a couple of hours.
Yeah, you're not done.
It's probably good.
Did you apply for any grants today?
Uh, I did not, nor did I receive any uh, funds for gifting else.
Oh, wow, okay, all right. Well, you know, you have some work to do this week then. Um, all right, then we're not gonna have any comments from the acting town administrator, and we're gonna move into fall town meeting warrant development discussion. I'm just pulling up my notes here that are in our agenda packet. The capital sub, oh, so I did talk to the chair of the school committee, and I think it's their intention to come before the select board sometime after September ninth? I think they need to vote on their cap, any any possible capital request, not saying I know one way or the other if they have any. Um, but I think that they had a vote for the ninth, and so we could expect to hear from them sometime after that.
That was my understanding that the budget subcommittee not met, therefore they didn't have a recommendation as of everything last week, which is why the first opportunity they would have to vote placeholders for any new initiatives, not currently as a placeholder, would be.
And there was a meeting with town council, keep federal off on Friday of last week of removing the potential zoning, solar zoning article from this draft. Attack request, we don't anticipate one. When does the capital, the town, town capital subcommittee uh, meet again?
They're not meeting again, so.
Well, you're looking for that, Ben?
Yeah, I I can't find anything posted. Um, I believe it was left last time, but then might be. I mean, we went through most, actually most of the uh, west, I think.
They were sending here from the police chief with regards to Cruz requests, and they want to hear from questions.
Just I think we just. Um, um, so basically the short answer is we don't have anything planned at this time.
But but for a minute, I'm gonna circle back to what J Robinson had to say when he brought it up to the table about the Woodland Street uh, bridge. Jay?
Yeah.
Uh, Travis does have that tagged on a possible ARPA capital list.
Thank you.
Uh, and then we have a potential article for sidewalk design engineering, design, big build on the draft warrant here, and the tier two project list is supposed to be submitted by September first. So assuming Sean uh, is still on target to do that, I think we'll have some more discussion once the state approves our tier two list and could, in theory and probably in our practicality, pull a project to offer that tier two list to use as the project for that sidewalk article. I don't see anything else worth getting into right now. That's John or Ben, guys, have anything you want to bring up?
I would also point out to the packet, but previously you discussed the potential for a citizen's petition to be based on conversation with council, town administrator, and the second one. There's nothing been turned into court yet, but it was just something that he heard from a conversation with someone at the council. No surprises.
Okay, no surprises, but I, I'm wondering if this was added after. Okay, well, it is what it is. We get it in time or we don't, so I don't know that we really have to discuss so much.
No, no, there's no such thing to it, but just as a follow up to the questions last week. If the signatures are certified, doesn't have to go on, even if the board thinks that it might not be binding, those sorts of questions.
Yes, okay. And the deadline for a citizen petition to be submitted with the necessary signatures is September twentieth. I am confirming that.
Four PM.
Okay, well, I'm, short discussion there, so we're gonna move on to board business, of which it does not look like we have any. You should have a folder. Okay, so no board business to discuss, and then we're number eight, other business. John, do you have any other businesses?
No.
Then with the business?
Not too.
Acting town administrator.
I have none unless, I know town administrator wasn't sure if he wanted us to have a camera discussion, but I know we're gonna have to let that work its way through other groups.
When you say camera, you're not referring to the IT request from the board. You are talking about the traffic monitoring.
Which would be for both the ARPA steering group as well as a placeholder on the town article trust.
Right, and um, it has not yet been discussed at the ARPA steering group, but it has been discussed in the capital side. Okay, uh, yeah, so I I mean, there's a lot of detail here. There's a lot of history with this request. It is not the first time it's come forward. Um, and the connection is, in your mind and others' mind included, is is there. It's it's strong to why traffic monitoring falls under ARPA in terms of recovery and uh, and such. So do you wanna make?
And and at the same time, an argument could also be believed that it is the fulfillment of a project that was started several years ago, because when public safety officials were meeting as part of the. because when public safety officials were meeting as part of the design phase of the downtown signalization process, the one request that law enforcement was making was traffic preemption cameras. And they were sure, absolutely, it's in the project, it's in the project, it's in the project. We got it installed. There was still money left over. There were punch lists. Public safety said, okay, you're pretty much done with your punch list. And we moved forward with the cameras, and then we were told it's not part of the way the language was approved to town to authorize the project. Therefore, the next phase came in with preemption equipment for public safety vehicles. And we coupled that with the camera request that had always been the expectation of our question at the beginning. Those two requests were decoupled due to funding restrictions. And that's why we're fully built out with our traffic preemption. But the cameras for monitoring remain extant. So holistically, one can see this as the fulfillment of the project that started over five years ago. One could see this potentially as a capital request in it of itself. One could see it as a potential linkage to ARPA, so.
So one of the pieces to ARPA, one of the overarching goals of ARPA funds are to improve the resilience of the community to future pandemics. That is one of, well, do they even limit it to just pandemic or to future?
Stronger communities and neighborhoods.
The case has been made previously that having traffic monitoring equipment improves response times for public safety when there are issues related to crashes and other incidents. It improves response.
And real time knowledge. I'll give you an example with adultery. On Friday, the police dispatcher received a report from a person driving through downtown that the signals were malfunctioning and that all of the travelers coming at the central Washington intersection were receiving a green light at the same time. That meant that the police dispatcher had to divert a police officer on patrol to the downtown area to check out that report. One could argue that if they had the system that was recommended and that thrice, they could have turned their attention to a forty six inch monitor on the wall, selected the central Washington camera and could have immediately known whether or not everybody had a green or whether someone was misinterpreting traffic. So it's not just improving response times, and it's it's real time knowledge of what's going on. Um, and it can be something as simple as uh seeing an erratic operator going through an intersection or turning. Sometimes they get a call that a vehicle is entering into downtown and whether or not the person is still on the phone, talking to the dispatcher can determine whether they knew whether they went straight out of intersection or turn which can let the cruisers know which direction they to to travel when they get to the intersection.
Yeah, John.
Like, uh, well done, succinct recollection, as always, in the history of a project. I understand that um some members or a member of the finance committee suddenly is interested in a policy uh relative to the use of those images and how public safety will use that information. Uh, we have an accredited police department, I believe, that hosts this information. We spoke with Chief Cassidy about how this particular technology can be adopted into an existing or perhaps written into a new policy to resolve this uh emerging interest in a in a written policy.
Chief Stone is eager to respond to the queries of how that information was. He was disappointed that it didn't advance for a funding request last fall at the December town meeting. And there are multiple town buildings right now and other town assets that have monitoring equipment on them that have been used from an investigative standpoint in the past. And I'm not aware of a single complaint from anyone alleging that their privacy uh has been invaded by these.
May maybe all true, but because we've always done it this way, it's never really a good policy. So if I could, Mr. Acting Town Administrator, I'm sure, through you to the full time TA. Could you ask Travis to reach out to that to produce said policy? Or point the user towards an existing policy that says, this is how we use digital media. Digital information is available to us and only under these circumstances. Actually, it may suffice. It's just an item that I think, like you said, it seems a little, you know, ten years ago-ish, when people were more concerned about the use and movement of that digital information. Um, I get it, but if there's a quick answer and the chief has it in his arsenal, let's get it without delay. So if you could ask Travis to get that through to Chief Stone, I would appreciate it.
And also point out, just quickly, thinking back on that, that these cameras cannot be used to um or for for ticketing or for red lights. They're not, they're not intended or they're not, I don't think it's legal, actually.
There's no law on this place to use them.
To use them in that fashion, so.
You you make a good point, though. I I don't disagree with you, John. You you make a good point that there's a long track record of um demonstrated trust building behavior by our public safety officials with images captured by cameras on these and other buildings. That there's a demonstrated track record of appropriate um trustworthy behaviors when it comes to what what those digital um images are used for. That that's very meaningful. I agree, policy puts the the nail on the coffin, but you know, it's the thing that you hang your hat on. However, I personally would put tremendous value on on that track record of appropriate trustworthy management of those images in the past with cameras already.
And we are not the first community to talk about deploying this equipment. So I'm sure if he doesn't already have it embedded in in his policies and procedures that are accredited, Chief Stone could very easily get a boilerplate on for a college.
And then in terms of why ARPA, you have described, provided the rationale that I I I again personally find sufficient to justify it as an ARPA expense, resilience against future pandemics and public health emergencies, as well as strengthening that means in in my mind and probably many others, there's no way that, in in every way, does this traffic monitoring equipment also complement walkability, safe access to our parks, to our public buildings, to our downtown businesses and to our trade up. Um, and that is one of the biggest strengths our community had during pandemics that we had available to our residents. So um I see this as a very significant compliment to all of those things that fall under, you know, a strong community during the pandemic. So I don't have an issue.
Thank you for indulging me. I I know the town administrator spoke about you.
I do.
Some of this discussion.
Yes.
I just pick one.
Yes.
Um, my only, I I I understand it's it fits within ARPA. But given our previous conversation, I wonder if it would qualify as something that we should advance through ARPA or it should go through
As.
the capital, uh, the capital process, given, you know, is it something? I mean, I'm not saying it's not important. I'm not saying it's not something we should do. But I am saying that, given our conversation previously, it might be something that would be more uh pertinent for a town meeting discussion.
So the this has not been discussed at an ARPA steering group, if you have one. Okay, so from this discussion tonight, you would feel comfortable bringing it up for consideration at that September eighth meeting? Is that, I mean, we would get feedback from that.
Yeah, I I just, I just kinda wanted to bring that to 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 attention. I didn't want it to um ARPA to shelve it and then it just fades away because I think it is something important. I just wanna make sure that we keep, kinda have to keep it on both radars until um ARPA has the chance to.
And conceptually, the town administrator also, if it wasn't a good match for ARPA and it wasn't a good match for capital, then it could be its own article. So again, that discussion could be had with the voters who authorize.
I hope we will discuss on the eighth. Uh, part of hearing the feedback from that. Um, so that was your other business. I have one other business, especially for John. Then I just, we haven't checked back in on the idea of a twenty six police officer. That was something that when we were preparing the warrant for May, we said we would revisit again in October. It may be not fair to ask now with Travis not here, since he could have wanted to sort of develop how that would move through um uh to town meeting to the warrant. But um I thought, well, why not check in on that? Are you, are either of you of a similar mind to May? Are you of a different mind to May on the request for a twenty six police officer? Do you need more time to think about it?
I, my recollection, my recollection is you're right, you know, it was some echo of a fall time meeting dialogue. It was guaranteed, but um I think it's worth going back into those emails and those chats between the finance committee and town administrator. I I'm kind of agnostic on where to land on that. I guess let's go back to where we left it off. I'm, you bring up something that I recall had something to do with the fall town meeting, so let's let's chat about it.
Remember having a conversation about it. I mean, personally, I feel it is more of a May conversation, a budget conversation, but that's not personal to me.
You know what? Then it had something to do with the recruitment cycle.
Yeah, I I do remember. I do remember talking about it. I I mean, I'd like to hear, like, if it's on administrator or Chief Stone. Has customer opinions about it. I would be curious to.
I'll be at a casual conversation, not the purpose of my meeting with Chief Stone and Lieutenant Thompson and Lieutenant Lundy. It did come up at that meeting. The interest was expressed to me was still very much be there. I would say that the recruitment cycle does come to bear. Um, if they have candidates that they could look to hire right now, that may not be the case. But they definitely expressed to me at the time an interest in this is, you know, it was early August. Um, so, okay, um, I will follow up with Travis and see if we picked up the conversation we left it off from last May. Thank you. Um, I have no other town, no other business rather, so we will uh look to close the meeting, so I'm just in motion to adjourn at eight twenty twenty two.
Or should you turn second?
On favor.
Aye.
All right. May Halston, we will not see you on Monday. Um, it will be the following Monday, the thirteenth.